All right, I'd like to call to order on this very special Monday, April 7th, 2025, City Council meeting, 7:00 PM. If you all rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? Tonight, our councils are here, except Kim, Councilor Holmes is excused absent, and Santiago, Councilor Santiago as well. Try to remind me to maybe text Kim when we get close. Okay, just so she knows, yeah, somebody, we get closer, done. Okay, so you guys now looking at the agenda, I don't think I have any recommendations for any changes, so anybody, nobody else does, I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor President Miller.
I move that we accept with one addition to the agenda.
Right.
It's an official happy birthday to the mayor.
Oh.
I promised your wife that I'd see some time.
I promised you wouldn't tell anything.
That's why it's special, I get it.
Yeah, that's why it's so special. Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, he says.
Um, declined.
Declined.
We have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as written. And so, seconded by Counselor Haugen. More discussion. Thank you. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? You almost threatened to come and sing happy birthday, but I didn't say nope. Um, any public comment tonight? Always. Okay, so seeing no public comment, we will move on to number one. In our consent agenda tonight, we are looking at March 17th, 2025, City Council work session minutes and the council liaison appointments. If you've had all the chance to look at those. Everything look okay? Looking for someone to make a motion to approve.
Yes, Mayor, I'm, I want to approve the consent agenda.
So Haugen makes a motion to approve consent agenda any second. Seconded by Counselor LaFrenz. Any more discussion? None. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Onto Safe Soil Day proclamation. If you remember, I think it was a year or two ago, Sadagura came in and we talked about safe soil and the importance of that, and so we are just re- remembering, and again, I'm just gonna read a little bit here. "Safe Soil is a global movement launched by Sadagura, uniting world leaders, visionaries, influencers, and citizens of all nations behind a common purpose to restore and safeguard this world's soil. It aims to address global soil crisis, recognizing 52% of the world's agricultural soils are already degraded and tw- by twenty, fifty, ninety percent of earth soils could be degraded." Then, therefore, I, Mayor Joe Backes, City of Scappus, hereby proclaim March 21st as Safe Soil Day in Scappus. Soil is vital to all life and urge all citizens to be a part of the Safe Soil Movement to support national policies towards soil restoration and aim to raise the organic content of soil to a minimum of three to six percent." Okay. Moving on. We're joined, we have a couple distinguished guests today. Sheriff Pixley, would you like to come up to the microphone and again, we can hear you, but the microphone will allow us to record you as well.
Perfect.
You're here today to talk about the Columbia County jail levy discussion.
Yes, sir. Yes. Thank you for having me here today, guys. Today, we're gathered, we're gathered here to talk about something that affects not just a few of us, our entire community, safety, security, and how we support our local justice system. As you may know, we're asking voters to renew the existing levy, same rate of 58 cents per $1,000. This is the same rate that we've been paying since the levy was first passed in 2013, 2014. I understand the natural reaction to any tax measure is kind of repulsion, I get, I get that, but many, and I know many of us are already balancing tight budgets. This is simply just a continuation of the current levy that will allow us to keep our jail open, continue to hold offenders accountable. Our jail is more than just a simple holding facility, part of a system that deals with growing cha- growing challenges, including mental health crisis and substance abuse issues, often land people in jail. This levy, we can continue to provide resources for rehabilitation programs, mental health care, and substance abuse issues. This can help people turn their lives around and help reduce repeat offenders. Fewer people end up back in jail, it creates a safer, more stable community for all of us. Let's talk about why this, what this renewal actually means in practical terms. This tur- this measure will not raise your taxes at all. The extra money needed to make ends meet in the jail will be raised by renting out additional beds to the US Marshal's Office, keeping our jail open, safer streets, a justice system that works better for everyone. Finally, this levy is not just about keeping people in jail, it's about building a community where crime is less likely to happen in the first place. Investing rehabilitation, mental health services, and crime prevention will reduce the burden on law enforcement and help keep our neighborhoods safe. When we invest in the infrastructure and services that make our communities safer, we all benefit. See fewer crimes, fewer victims, fewer families torn apart. This jail levy renewal is an opportunity for us to do just that. You see Measure 5304 on your ballot, I urge you to not just think about the dollar value, the dollar amount, but about the broader picture. This is about creating a safer, stronger, and more compassionate community. We all can thrive. I hope the City of Scappus will once again vote to endorse this upcoming jail levy renewal. Really appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you.
Answer any questions you guys might have.
Um, now, this is a, I see it's a four-year levy.
Four-year levy.
How many times have you renewed this levy?
Uh, it was passed, I believe, in 2014, renewed in 2017, and again in 2020.
Yes, Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Pixley, for coming. I am fully in support, and the constituents I've been speaking with over the last few months have expressed their support for this as well. One question, though, that has come up is just regarding the long-term financial viability of the jail. Traditionally, levies are used for like one-time events, so looking forward, what is the plan to shore up the jail's finances outside of a levy?
So, without speaking for the county commissioners, I guess without an influx of additional funds from the general fund, which I've been assured is no longer, is not there, down the road, I'm looking to put it in place for me or the next person after me. The only, only way to move this forward is to have a permanent taxing district in place that will help support not only the jail, but law enforcement at the county level as a whole. We can do away with all the levies and all of this, and back and forth to the voters every four years, just have some, some stable funding in place. I don't think the Sheriff's Office has ever had, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sir Haugen. Sheriff Pixley, so in addition to Resolution 25-03 tonight, what else can we do on, on council to help you, to help support this?
Tell your friends and family, tell your neighbors. If you have a rich uncle, Bob, have him donate to the, to the cause. We're, we're not ashamed to beg, but really, it's all about talking to your constituents, talking to your neighbors, your friends, your family. Pretty soon, we're gonna have yard signs to go up, but this really kind of has to be a grassroots effort. Learned that over the past, past failure, because this can't be from me talking to everyone, this has to be grassroots.
Oh, so the yard signs, so, so if everyone in council puts up a yard sign, that should help.
That will help, and then if-
And where will we get the yard signs?
From me, where they're actually being printed tonight.
Okay.
So.
Now, will you, will you have a presence like at Earth Day, so there's some exposure there?
Yeah, we, we always try to hit as many community events as we can throughout the past four years.
We'll do what we can.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you.
I think too with this is seeing social media and stuff, is it's not a new tax, it's not an additional tax, it's just an extent, extension of the tax that's already there. And so getting out the right message, the correct information, people see this and they're, oh, now I've gotta pay 58 cents more. No, it's, it's a continuation of what's already been there. So other than the valuation of the property going up, it won't change.
Yeah, and if, the stark renewal is if this levy fails, you run out of funding June 30th. I'll have a $3.9 million pool in my budget. That's kind of the reality I'm facing right now.
Can you remind us, how close was the last vote? It was-
Last vote, I believe we were, I wanna say we, we lost by about 2,500 votes.
Okay.
Which I think, so we had, we had a levy, first attempt was in May, and we were, and it was a kind of a low turnout. November was a huge turnout, but we actually made up, made up some, some space there. So this, with this being a straight renewal, I'm hoping to cross that gap.
Yes. So for the Scappus residents that watch or hear this meeting, the one thing that I'd like to point out too, with Scappus being basically the gateway to Multnomah County, in other words, being so close to Portland, we also often actually fall victim to some of the Portland property-related crimes. Specifically, we have the folks from Portland come out, steal cars in the wee hours of the morning or night, and then take them back to Portland. If I was Rainier, I would be equally concerned with the bridge going over to Longview, so for Scappus and Rainier, I think this, this levy should be particularly important. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, because of this, like, like Counselor Haugen mentioned, we do have a resolution that I was gonna entertain and see if you guys were interested in supporting. I will read it, and then we can talk or discuss or vote on it. Because you're looking for our support and our, so a resolution in support of Measure 5-034, a measure brought by the Columbia County Board of Commissioners for a tax levy to renew the four-year jail operating tax levy at its current rate. Whereas the City of Scappus is a municipal corporation where the city council believes public safety services are critical for the safety and livability of the Scappus community, and whereas the Columbia County Jail, operated by the Columbia County Sheriff's Office, house those, the individuals arrested by Scappus police officers who are accused of committing criminal acts, and whereas Columbia County seeks to renew the current option tax levy rate at .5797 cents per $1,000 of assessed property value lasting four years, and whereas the per Columbia, Columbia County, without the renewed tax levy rate of .5797 per $1,000 of assessed property value, the jail will not be able to operate at current capacity, leading to staff reductions for fewer jail beds and a shift to a book-and-release model, a complete jail closure as possible. So now for, I guess I'll look at it, or we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 25-03.
Counselor Haugen moved to approve. Any seconds? Seconded by Counselor Jacobs. Any more discussion? Thank you Tyler, or Counselor President Miller for helping put this together. Uh, seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Scappus City Council hereby resolves as follows, council support for Columbia County Measure 5-304.
Thank you. On a personal, I really wanna thank you guys. Every time I come and sit in front of you guys, you ask good questions, you're always very supportive of law enforcement, about the entire, entire county, so, and I really thank you guys.
I appreciate the teamwork to do, I, you know, talking to Chief Flouellen, it's a good partnership, and we really appreciate your support as well. Thank you.
Do you want to go to Rainier?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hey, moving on, JJ Duran, if you'd like to come on up, Jeff, if you'd like to join her.
I'd like to share the microphone, JJ.
Oh, boy. So, uh, my name's JJ Duran, Scappus Parks, also work closely with the library, all for free, to do great things for our community, which I've been very lucky to do, and couldn't do it without Jeff and all of you. I just wanna make a quick observation about the jail. You know, it's interesting, when I got appointed to the Parks Committee in 2018, I think, I figured there was a Parks, you know, there are people doing things for parks, and didn't realize that Scappus had no resources for parks, and that you basically had a Public Works Director doing all the work, and I guess that expectation is because I came from the Portland area, and I just assumed it, and I also wonder how many people, you know, we all know this, but I mean, people that have moved here, I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of them don't already assume that we've got a jail here in Scappus, and don't even realize that the only jail is in Columbia County, so that's just something to, to really think about, because I think there's more truth to that than you know. So, anyway. First off, I wasn't expecting to do this, but I, many people that deserve awards that have done so much for our events, but Jeff brought me one, to a very deserving individual, President of City Council Tyler Miller, who has not only continued to support us and show up and go to work, unlike Joe, but he's given us money, so you'll get your award when you do the job, Joe, but right now, I'd like to, I think, well, I'm gonna let Jeff, I'll give you this award for all your help with all the events that we do, Tyler, and thank you for financially supporting us, because we're on a shoestring budget. I wa- I wasn't either. All right. Thank you so much, Tyler, and, and That's right. Well, you know, we, we appreciate everybody that helps with this event. I mean, we've got Chief Chris, who is just, you know, just amazing, you know, with the Police Department, doing the, the food giveaways. The great thing about Earth Day is that, you know, we have, and I think it's the only time we actually, outside of breakfast for the, for the, the city meeting, where we give away all the food. So we give away hot dogs, burgers, Fattanos from Grocery Outlet, Fattanos gives us pizzas, and we start, and we also give away free breakfast for the SOLV cleanup, that we start at 7:30 as breakfast, and then right around 8:00, we put everybody to work. I believe this year, we're going to be doing the Crowns Ellerback Trail, doing native planning, and I also talked to Dave, and we're supposed to also do something along Highway 30, and I believe we'll be working with the Police Department in conjunction with that. So that's, and we get Fred Meyer donating the breakfast items, Starbucks gives us coffee. I mean, it's just, it's amazing how, you know, in these, these years we've been doing this, how we've really built up a lot of community partners that, that do it, because it's, it's a good event, you know, it's, it's a well-organized, I am somewhat entertaining, but we have live music that, that really should take the credit. For Earth Day, we're giving away a, another electric bike, and we actually got a discount on it from Barlow Bikes, from our dear friend Paul there, and he's gonna be there, and he's also gonna donate a couple of bikes that he's rehabbing, so we'll have three bikes that we give away, along with lots of prizes, free food, but this year, we wanted to do something more, because the library has essentially been cut off from getting donations from the Columbia County Food Bank with non-perishable goods, because their funds were decimated. We are going to do a food drive that will be with a number of our community partners, I've talked to a number of, of you at City Council about this, and we just think it's really important to do. So the official start date for that is going to be on April 3rd. We're going to use our painted trash cans that we had, we had a trash can painting contest a few years ago at our movies in the park, so we're gonna use those. If people don't have the, the Columbia Food Bank barrels with signage, and then on the 26th, we'll, we'll say, hey, we're giving you free food, but if you can maybe bring a can or non-perishable item, we can help those in need. And so I think it's, and we're, the spotlight's gonna be doing a story about it, I think we'll get a lot of social media traction on it, and it's just, to me, it's just the right thing to do. I think we're in an incredibly difficult time right now, where I think grants and everything else are gonna be really up in the air, and, you know, I can be angry about that, or I can try to make a positive difference, and I hope you will all join us in that venture.
On that, will you kind of keep us apprised of where the cans are, and we can put it on our Facebook too?
Yes.
Come to these, and if you move
Yes.
Every week to a different location, find the best spots, let us know, and-
Yeah, and if you have suggestions on, we need places with great foot traffic. I mean, obviously Grocery Outlet, they already donate quite a bit, I think they get pickups like three days a week right now. So it's a little disconcerting that Scappus is not seeing any of that for our food distribution on Wednesdays, so I will, I'm gonna talk to the Food Bank about that as well, but, you know, T-Mobile, Clum River PUD, and Clum River PUD doesn't get a lot of food, foot traffic, but they do have a lot of employees that a certain someone there is gonna twist some arms to, to donate food, so, you know, it's, it's a tough time, but it's the time we need to come together even more.
Appreciate that. So SOLV starts around 7:30.
Mm-hmm. It goes until 10:00, and then at 11:30, well, the event starts at 10:00, we have live music donated by the, Paul's, Paul's got a band, we'll see how that turns out. What is it called? Oh, the Cater Hill Band. I, I told him we should call it the Nothing Special Band, but that's between us, but, anyway, so they're gonna play, and the, the Decades are also gonna play, and they're all donating their time, so it's just, you know, it's really heartwarming, and people have come up and sponsored to help us just cover costs, so, you know, it's a, it's a great event. And last year, I, you know, won a National PBS Award for our photography on Mother Nature and me giving a crown to a little kid, so that was kind of cool.
I did, we are gonna, the city will have a table there?
Yes, that was, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Joe, I appreciate that. We want City Council to be participating there. It would also be helpful, and we say this with all of our community partners, if you have materials that you could give us, like a couple of days before the event, we have these swag bags that are recyclable grocery bags, and so if you've got something regarding Scappus, or something that you want the community to know about, they go in the swag bags even before we hand them out, and then we hand them out to families, and if you have additional materials at your table, that's also great, because we are giving them bags, so they're gonna want some swag, so I'm not sure what that means, but, you know, Clum River PUD gave away little, what was it, little toy trucks last year for the kids, but yeah, it's just, it's a lot of fun, and at 2:30, we do the bike drawing, and just like it should be in life, you must be present to win, and we've got a lot of prizes we're giving away, but that's the, the big one. We are also partnering with Means Nursery to do, uh, they're, I'm working with them to donate lilacs that we can plant along the Crowns Ellerback Trail, and I know it's not a native species, but they smell great and they look great, and there are certain areas that I think that, I think Dave was talking about down by the Tur Tech, that area there.
I walked that off, and I was gonna tell you how it's 150 yards or so, so-
Yeah, yeah, so I think that'll be a really, really nice thing, that Means Nursery, they give us a bunch of stuff, so.
Where you pull in and park, everybody will see them, all lined up there.
Yeah, yeah, and people love lilacs, I mean, you know, cities have lilac festivals, so maybe that's what'll happen here.
Yeah.
Um, JJ, is there a signup for SOLV?
There is, I have been promoting it. We're putting on the library, and then we have our, our Facebook page, which I can forward to NJ, but yeah, if you guys can, can really get out there and promote that, because Kara, who was our former president of the Parks Committee, she's heading that up again this year, just, you know, bless her for that. So she'll be working with all the recruits, and I believe Chris, Chief Chris, are you, are you, has she talked to you about this at all? Okay, I'll, that's all right, I'll talk to her and make sure that you guys are in communicate, but, but my understanding right now from Dave is that the police are supposed to be somewhat supportive of what's going on on the highway, and then the planting, which is being done with Scappus Bay watershed, you know, it's just along a trail, so it's not-
So Dave talked to me, I just don't have the details, but I-
Okay, all right, we'll figure, we'll get there, we always do, all right. You guys are great, thank you. Thank you for serving up all that food.
And if you could email JJ or Susan on like the link to the SOLV signup, is it through the library? Okay.
And I did too. So, but I'll, I'll, I'll send that to you, but yeah, we've got the SOLV cleanup. So the big draws, and the only reason I know this is because I did this for decades, is free stuff. So promoting, you know, promoting people getting free breakfast to, to help out and clean is always great. The free bike is a huge draw, and free food is a huge draw, so I'm anticipating we're gonna, you know, knock it out of the park again this year.
No, that's like our, the theme of our all-town meeting, we're engaged, we want community engagement, citizens involved, and just a few events throughout the year get a lot of people engaged, so we would appreciate it.
Yep.
Communication, collaboration, number one goal, so that helps. All right, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's on the emailed one that NJ got.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Added it after he printed.
Okay, gotcha, great. That's the one I reviewed.
Yeah.
So I was-
Saw it too, and then I looked at my email, that's the only thing. You can text Kim, that will probably be a few minutes, but yeah, okay. So calendar, we had a very successful ATM on Saturday, I'll talk about that a little bit more. April 17th, do we still have an EDC plan in commission at noon scheduled? April 21st, council work session at 6:00 PM, followed by City Council at 7:00 PM, and just as we mentioned, Earth Day event, April 26th, spring cleanup event throughout the city. Update, City Manager, Burgener.
Oh, further at this time.
No updates at this time. Police Chief, Chris Flouellen.
Um, just really happy to announce that Sergeant McKenzie started and, uh, last week and joined our team. She's right now in Sun River, um, getting, receiving training to become a field training officer, and besides, they're still hiring people, and I'll be in the market for a new grill. The, all the ones been, tried to put out the pasture, served, served the city well, but looking for a new one, so.
We can try to find you one.
Yep, that's all I, that's all I have.
Thank you for your information on Saturday and helping with the all-town meeting.
No problem at all, Sir Mayor.
Uh, Counselor Haugen?
Um, just that, since I, since I will be the new council liaison to the school board of the district, I think I am.
Yes, you are.
I, I just wanna get concurrence, because I took a previous discussion that, I, I really do wanna get the, uh, school council going, so with, with your approval, I will push that as hard as I can.
Okay, thank you. I did speak with Kristen Haugen at, at the, at the Grant Watts Auction, and she really recommended Jeremy Kelly, the principal, be a good one, because he has access to a very fine group of people that might be interested in that as well.
Okay.
And, and then we can determine how's it get started, who starts it, who runs it.
Yeah, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can, we can use Hillsborough or Valley, and just create that.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Thank you, Counselor Jacobs.
Yes. Um, for another event after Earth Day, the Watts House is having a event from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday, the 27th, where they're having longtime resident Scappusians to give their account of their time in Scappus, so it'd be a really nice historical event for people to come in and hear from longtime residents in the area. Lastly, just one thing I wanted to put at the top of mind, which it may be of some of our counselors, is we talk about goal number two, sustainable finances. One thing that I've been having a lot of conversation with residents is about just the financial viability of our police force long-term. That's something we discussed at goal-setting. So I think there's a lot of work we need to do if this council is interested in wanting to kind of explore further what our financial options will be to ensure the viability of our police department long-term. I'd like for us to start working on that this year, because I believe this will be a long-term goal to see to come to fruition. I'm happy to help lead that effort, if there's also someone else on council that's interested.
Marissa, when, when was the Watts House senior activity?
Uh, that's from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon on the 27th of April, Sunday.
On the 27th?
Yes.
Thank you, yeah, I, it would probably be- Thank you, yeah, I, it would probably be good to find out, we talked about sustainable, what are our options? You know, not specifically, but like what does a levy entail? Like how much do you make off of it at certain values? How much is a fee if we do a $5 fee? You know, what are the things out there that we can start discussing, looking into a little bit?
Mr. Mayor, uh, City Manager Bergenner and I, excuse me, also had a recent conversation about some potential other, is it generate, excuse me, generate revenue? Gas tax, and there's some rules and things, and definitely some things to look into, but there might be some other options for revenue generation for that, too. But, to your point, we do need to start on that.
And I know, though, list of priorities, but we, if we have property and we sell property, or we cut wood, I mean, we have some timber, what are our options? You know, obviously, we, it might be at the bottom of the list, but it's nice to know what all of our options are, and, and, especially seeing other cities struggling through their budgets, and, and we really wanna be prepared, be kind of looking forward, so we don't get to that stage, I guess. And so we can educate everybody well in advance, and get everybody kind of on board, so we can really engage in the public community too when we do this, and bring them in as well for information and their input.
Just a note on that, I am working with staff right now to start, or we've been vetting out the last, while going through budget prep as well, and to, to vet out a proposed roadmap on each of these goals of next steps of what that will look like when we're gonna get started on that. One of the, the biggest considerations is just staffing time of which things we have kind of going down the pipe, and when we can jump on some of those things, but we do wanna have work sessions with the council to go over funding strategies, that's why we sent out that packet last month from the League of Oregon Cities, so you can really start reading through that and have time to digest some of those options, but as it gets closer to past budget season, we wanna start, kind of going through that further, what those options look like, and talk about what the appetite of the council would be to move forward on those. So, to, to be coming, but it is, it is on the, the list of things we're working through right now. Right now, NJ, we're mostly trying to figure out policy, finished a lot of things that we already had in the pipe, right, on the tail end there.
Thank you. Counsel, the...
And tonight?
Counsel President Miller.
Thank you for everybody who showed up at the annual town meeting, we had a pretty good turnout, and I don't have anything on that, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Can we sing Happy Birthday?
Oh, no, no, no. Unless you put on the big hat and sing it.
Big hat.
Yeah, the big silvery...
Our chief over there is pretty good at paper airplanes, maybe you can put on a paper hat.
We need some numbers on the billboard.
Yeah, yeah. And, and how old are you, sir?
25.
Get my ARRP card going.
That's right. You're a white, I would embarrass you.
Think I finally get my discount at, at Goodwill.
Coffee cheaper.
Senior discount. Thank you again, yes, at the All-Town Meeting, thank you. We do probably wanna discuss it at a later time. Now, the Bens had one, is to see if that is, again, if that's the, the way we wanna do it again next year, if there's any changes, if there's any, you know, what are we trying to get out of it, what do we get out of it? So, we'll look at that in the next couple of months. Be interesting to see all the input that people did do, it sounds like they got some really good input on the, on the boards, and it'll be good to see that come back and see what we get out of that.
Right, and then just to follow up on that, we're looking at doing a survey to send out to the community for those who did not come, to find out what would interest them in coming to one of those meetings, and I do think there are a lot of events that happened on last Saturday, both in St. Helens here and everywhere else, so that, that could be one consideration, but, and we're also looking at, actually, the next meeting, or then one after that, next month sometime, to have a work session with the council to kind of do a debrief on that, what you guys are thinking, or what you liked or didn't like about it as well, that we could do. So, really, the whole idea is to get a bunch of the feedback from all sides, so that we can plan already what things you want to adjust for next year.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think for what we wanted out of it, I think we got what we kind of wanted, what we expected, but is that what we want going forward? We talk about engagement, do we want that to be a bigger event where we do, it's really engagement, you know, or, or is it what we, you know, a couple of years, we've had big things that we can do, the Parks and Master Plan, or we wanna keep looking for a big thing like that to market each time, but it's a good event, it was our 10th annual, so it would, it'd be nice to keep something going. I don't have anything else, so, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, and we're gonna go into Executive Session 192.660-2-F, to consider information or record exempt by law from public inspection, unless anybody else has anything else. Yeah, we'll read this real quick. Representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all their members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. So, we don't expect to have anything after this, we'll reopen, probably adjourn, but there will not be any decisions that we vote on or discuss after this. Okay, meeting adjourned.